Always.
Thank you. We're to leave you.
Oh.
No, I'm just kidding. It's not me.
It was different than that, doesn't it? People were starting to talk.
You were scurrying on time?
Yeah.
Oh, my God. She's on, she's on that.
Good evening. Thank you.
We'll give you a raise. Double, is that what you get from us now?
Good evening, everyone. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of January 19th, 2023 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 50 Ellis Drive Way, New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting forth date, time, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and a roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. I ask everyone, please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. This evening, we'd like to start off with recognizing our past president of the board, Suzanne Putnam. Mrs. Kazan?
Oh, that quick? There I come.
You didn't bring attention.
I have to be ready for Suzanne. Come over here, my dear. Don't breathe while you've been near sick people? Oh. Okay. Okay, thank you. Suzanne likes me, she just might have goodies. Okay. It is my honor and privilege to speak this evening about my colleague and friend Suzanne Putnam. Suzanne has spent decades working with and educating children, starting with her time spent in Patterson and culminating in her close to two decades here in Wayne before retiring. Retirement wasn't a time for Suzanne to put her feet up, read a great book, and call it a day. No, she still had plenty to continue to offer, not only to her school community, but to the students she loved so much. As a colleague, I can tell you that Suzanne brought a wealth of experience and firsthand knowledge about our schools and the challenges of our staff to her role as a trustee. In addition to her six years of service as a member, she spent two years as vice president in 2020 and 2021 during what I could safely say were the most challenging years in education. She then took the chair as president in 2022 and took that role very seriously. Suzanne always did her homework before making any important decision or pitching an initiative to the board. I would sometimes tease her about her copious notes and preparation before meetings, although shh, don't tell her. I absolutely respected her work ethic. This is not an easy position to hold. You will never please everyone, and you will be blamed for everything that goes wrong. Sometimes, if you're truly lucky, someone will say thank you. Well, it is my pleasure to do that this evening. I can't thank you enough, Suzanne, for all that you've done to make the lives of our students better, for all that you've sacrificed to be here for six years, and most of all, for your friendship. You have much to be proud of, and I hope you take that with you in your next chapter. I know it will involve children, especially your grandchildren. This is not goodbye, this is see you later. I look forward to continuing our breakfast meetings at Cindias. I also hope you keep all of these new folks on their toes. You know where to find them. Please accept this small token of the community's appreciation. It's pretty heavy, you can always use it as a doorstop or a paperweight. I'm sure you don't need a block of glass to recall what you've accomplished here. Thank you.
I'll be brief. Thank you. It's an honor to receive this. It was an honor to spend six years on the board. I want to congratulate everyone that's up here, and especially Dawn and Harry, who have to do some heavy lifting, especially. And I figured out that today that I have spent more than half of my adult life in some form of education, whether it was as an educator or on the school board. And it means a great deal. And I viewed being on the school board as a sacred trust. Anytime you have been given the trust of families and children to do better for them, to move them forward, it's sacred. And I'm sure that you will carry on, make tough decisions, and move the district forward. If you need any help, I would be more than happy to serve in some other capacity. So, thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Putnam, thank you from the entire board. We've gone, our relationship has gone back a long time, from the media center at Lafayette, when you complained about the carpeting. But we've gone back a long time, and your family as well, and a great family that you do have. And thank you for all your service to this town, to the students of this town. You've made an impact on a lot of children's lives, and that's what matters. Thank you. Dr. Tobek?
Certainly, we will, we already miss you, and I just wanted to just let the audience know, it's kind of like echoing some of the thoughts before. This is a woman who has really spent almost all of her life devoted to the children of this community. And I say this as someone who knows her quite well, for the past few years I've gotten to know her. Her heart is very pure and focused on education and doing what's best for the children. And during your entire time on the board, I know that there are literally an endless number of ways I could, I could talk about how you, you always, always bring back any focus, any discussion always comes back to what is best for the children. So certainly, I appreciate having the opportunity to work with you, as does the rest of the administration, having the opportunity to work with you over the past many years has been a great pleasure.
Your report? Yeah.
So, so actually, we're at the part of the agenda where we were going to do our proclamation, right?
Yes.
Recognizing School Board Recognition Month.
Whereas the New Jersey School Board Association has declared January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge their contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the Wayne Board of Education is one of 580 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for school districts, and whereas the Wayne Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas New Jersey's local school boards helps to help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no remuneration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education, and whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas the boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools, and whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as National Assessment of Educational Progress scores and the Preparation for College Through Advanced Placement offerings and SAT assessments. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of the local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the Wayne Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local school boards of education and public school staff toward the advancement of our children's education.
Thank you. Dr. Tobek?
Okay, so for my report, I'd like to start by also recognizing our board members for their service. So while Wayne is a community with many volunteers who support numerous charitable organizations, service on the school board is a kind of community service that requires a level of commitment well beyond what is required of typical volunteers. It's really difficult to understand unless you've served as a school board member, the responsibility of delivering educational programs to 7,600 students, making sure our schools are safe, making certain that every classroom has a qualified teacher, and all of our instructional supplies and resources that are necessary are in each classroom, making sure that our schools provide for the educational needs of all students, balancing those educational needs with consideration of taxpayers. There's plenty more, but you get the sense this is a tall order. What we are really talking about is the oversight of a $180 million organization that is also one of the largest employers in New Jersey. This is an enormous responsibility, and something our board members accept willingly, and I can tell you they take very seriously. For members of the public, there's no time like the present to recognize our board members and say thank you for their efforts. Okay? So, so a few things. I know there's a lot of committee reports, and I know our student representatives have a lot to report on. So just a little bit about our academic recovery. Our elementary principals have been busy planning academic recovery intervention programs using ERP funds. Programs vary by building and are designed to target specific needs of identified students in either math, reading, or writing. Most programs will begin in the next two weeks at the elementary level and will take place either before or after school. It's important to emphasize that programs may differ from school to school, with some programs beginning a bit later than others due to other before or after-school program conflicts. Quick reminder for all of our eighth-grade parents that the deadline to sign up for the Baltimore trip is near. The closing date for parents to sign up is January 27th. If you'd like your child to go on the Baltimore trip, please be sure to sign up. Today, we included an email blast to all eighth-grade parents with a QR code to make it as easy as possible to go through the registration process. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize and thank the nearly 200 students, parents, staff, and administrators for working to support the efforts of the United Way on Martin Luther King Day. The event was held at Wayne Hills, and the volunteers donated personal care items and then assembled those items into donation kits. The event also included guest readers, reading activities, our projects, and Dr. Luther King Jr.'s civil rights lessons. The hygiene kits were donated to the United Way of Passaic County and will be distributed to the United Way Emergency Food and Shelter Partners across Passaic County. The United Way of Passaic County administers the Emergency Food and Shelter Program for this county, which provides financial support to low-income residents on an emergency basis to prevent hunger, to preserve housing, to provide shelter, and to support basic needs. The program was been led, has been led by the United Way for more than 25 years, and it's provided more than $1 million of support to neighbors in need in just this year alone. So also, yesterday I sent out a notice to the community regarding a school bus that was stolen in Livingston. I sent another update today, but I'm happy to report that the bus was recovered while being driven in Pennsylvania. For the HIB report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township public schools. There were seven incidents of HIB investigated since my last report. Three of those cases were deemed to be actual cases of HIB.
Thank you, Dr. Tobek. Our student reps, Ramsey?
Good evening. Gallery on Main in Somerville Artist of the Month series continues with an exhibition of photography by Wayne Hills student Lauren Faltis on view January 2nd through the 31st. Lauren is a senior at Hills and the youngest artist to ever be featured as a Gallery on Main Artist of the Month. She is co-president of the Wayne Hills Photography Club. The Wayne Hills Band is proud to announce that three of its musicians successfully auditioned for the North Jersey School Music Association's Region One Symphonic Band, Marcus Nieves for Bassoon, Juliana Steer Oboe, and Brandon Huang for Trombone, competed with students from all over northern New Jersey for the chairs in this prestigious ensemble. They will perform in a concert on the 29th at 1:00 p.m. at Parsippany Hills High School. On Tuesday, the 17th, the Wayne Hills Chapter of TRI-M, the National Music Honor Society, held its annual induction ceremony for new members. The evening featured comments from students about how music has affected their lives and a trumpet performance by Adith Balaji. Keynote speaker, Ms. Annie Pascal, class of 2018, also spoke about her journey in music and how it changed her life. The new inductees are Adith Balaji, Evan Biller, Bryn Buckley, Gia Chacon, Ryan Cioletti, Samuel Dorfman, Kevin Hart, Brandon Huang, Miranda Hune, Sarah Mahmudi, Janay Murray, Summer Sribada, and Faith Weisberg. For the 57th season of Theater at the Hill, the Wayne Hills Theater Workshop, we produced the play That Goes Wrong, a hilarious show about a group of actors trying to put on a play called The Murder at the Heversham Manor. As the title suggests, everything that can go wrong does. People forget to make entrances, lines are blown, props go missing, people end up in clocks, characters are knocked unconscious, and their last-minute substitutions make all the wrong choices, sending the show into chaos. Our production was a tremendous success. The kids worked tirelessly for months to bring the complicated script to life, playing multiple characters at once, and trying to keep track of the many ins and outs of the show. We are very much looking forward to our spring musical, Pippin. Congratulations to Erica Cusidi, who bowled the high game and high series of all girls at the Passaic County Championships on January 13th. Erica led the team, which finished in third place overall at the tournament. The boys' fencing team is 6-0 on the season. Girls' basketball is 11-0 and is in first place in leagues and the only undefeated team left in the Big North Conference without a loss. Girls' swimming is also undefeated with an 8-0 record and are atop of the division. Unified sports ended a successful season and are starting practices to get ready for the winter basketball season. Wayne Hockey is in the county finals tonight at the Icefall versus PCTI. Thank you.
Catherine?
Good evening. Wayne Valley kicked off the new year with the cast list for this year's spring musical coming out the first week we came back from winter break. Congratulations to Cheryl Ancelotti, Craig Legra, Charlotte English, and more for landing lead roles in our production of Little Women. Soon after, the senior fashion show held their first interest meeting for this year. On the 11th, the NCAA panel was held virtually for the first time, and parents and coaches of aspiring athletes were able to participate in the discussion. On the 15th, Wayne Valley hosted a dance competition. Valley's boys' basketball team is proud to be launching their fundraiser with the American Cancer Society and the Coaches vs. Cancer Program. As part of the fundraiser, the team sold clothing, although the store is now closed. However, people are still able to show their support by donating directly to the American Cancer Society website on the Wayne Valley Boys Basketball Team page. Congratulations to girls' basketball coach Sinram for reaching 300 total wins in her career, and boys' basketball coach Lay for reaching 600 total wins in his career. Wayne Valley is lucky to have the support of these passionate coaches, as both teams have enjoyed great successes over the years. Congratulations to Jess Capadonna and Kiki Ferguson on their acceptance as candidates for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's 2023 Student Visionaries of the Year. This is an annual scholarship and fundraising opportunity for students chosen for their leadership, dedication to finding a cure for blood cancer, and involvement within their community. They will be part of a seven-week challenge where they will work alongside high school students from across the nation to fundraise and spread awareness about blood cancer. All funds will go to the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to help their cause. Jess and Kiki will be competing in honor of a local pediatric blood cancer survivor. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you guys like to read the donations?
The first donation was received from Tunis Di PTO. This is for the Tunis Di Elementary School. The donation was to partially subside grade-level field trips with a total amount of $1,795. Next, from the John F. Kennedy PTO to John F. Kennedy Elementary School was a donation of $1,321, and the donation is to be used for all grade-level field trips. Next, from Colons Hardware to Wayne Valley High School, a donation of $100, and this donation is to the Wayne Valley High School Athletic Department.
The next donation is from Dr. Caitlin Jones at WarfighterEngage.org to Wayne Hills High School for an Xbox Adaptive Controller, Joystick, and Accessibility Switches in the amount of $800. And the next donation is from, sorry, the Special Olympics, New Jersey, to support school unified clubs and unified sports in the amount of $41,500. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who has donated. We really do appreciate it, especially the PTOs. Thank you. Mr. Geppert, would you read in the doctrine, please?
Resolution of the Wayne Board invoking the doctrine of necessity. Whereas the School Ethics Act was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators, and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. And whereas questions arose regarding how a board should invoke the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of a board of education has conflicts of interest on a matter required to be voted upon. Whereas the School Ethics Commission provided guidance in Public Advisory Opinion 3-98. And whereas the opinion set forth that, when it is necessary for a board to invoke the doctrine of necessity, the board should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such action is necessary, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission by resolution dated February 25, 2003, clarified and required a board of education invoking the doctrine of necessity to adopt a resolution setting forth that they are invoking the doctrine, the reason for doing so, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission further directed boards of education that invoked the doctrine to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, post it where post-public notices for 30 days, and provide the commission with a copy. Whereas the Wayne Township Board of Education desires to resolve litigation brought on behalf of a former district employee, and whereas Harry Prasakis has a personal relationship with the employee stemming from her participation in his election campaign, and whereas Ryan Battershill has a personal relationship with the employee stemming from her participation in his election campaign, and whereas Barbara Rigogliso has a personal relationship with the employee stemming from her participation on her election campaign, and whereas Michael Fatow has a personal relationship with the employee stemming from her participation on his election campaign, and whereas Avetta Wentick has a personal relationship with the employee stemming from her participation on her election campaign. And whereas the inability of the above five board members to participate in this process results in a lack of quorum, and whereas in order to resolve disputes with its employees through approval of a settlement agreement, the board must have a quorum, and whereas the board desires to invoke the doctrine of necessity in accordance with the procedures established by the commission to resolve litigation, now therefore be it resolved by the Wayne Township Board of Education as follows. One, that the five board members as noted above are in conflict by nature of their personal relationship with the employee involved in the matter to be voted upon, and the board therefore invokes the doctrine of necessity to act upon the proposed settlement agreement. Two, that this resolution shall be read at this public meeting, shall be posted where the board posts public notices for 30 days. Three, that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the School Ethics Commission by the board secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Marfa, revisions to the agenda?
There are no revisions to tonight's agenda.
All right. At this, this portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giudano?
Second.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Seeing no one, I move to close.
Second.
Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Prasakis. All right, we had some committees meet tonight. Mr. Giudano?
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. The Communications Committee met tonight. It's the first time for the new, the new compromising of the committee.
Grab a second.
It was attended by Dr. Tobek, myself, and Ms. Rigoloso. Basically, the meeting, we reviewed the handbook, the first thing we do at these meetings. Went over committee procedures, a lot of administrative stuff here. We discussed a couple of upcoming goals, but we tabled them for the next meeting so that we can get ourselves used to the committee way it is here. We did review the media coverage, most of it, of course, being congratulations on the new board people and such. The one thing we did want to talk about was the newsletter. A lot of people use social media, a lot of districts use social media. I apologize. Wayne uses a newsletter. Actually, on the website, I was proud to find out that over 12,000 people were viewing that newsletter. So it's a really valuable source for a lot of things that are going on, some really great stuff, not just the reports our fine representatives give us, but stuff that happens all the time, and you can really keep abreast of it. They come out weekly, so I encourage everybody, if you want to catch up what's going on in the district, to check out that newsletter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. This evening, the Facilities and Transportation Committee met, myself, Mr. Battershill, Mr. Prasakos, and administrators Lauren Tibbetts, Peter Romaine, Richard Skibitsky, and William Moffett. We went over the items that are on the agenda for this evening, particularly the maintenance withdrawal, which was discussed at the workshop that we had only a week ago. So most of the items were discussed fully at that meeting with regard to the funds reallocation, the ROD grants, and the project applications that the architects will be sending to Trenton to proceed with those projects. We discussed emergent capital maintenance needs and grant fund resolutions at the last meeting as well, and we went over those. The department project status update for the Hills Science Lab, which will be taking place over the summer. The Valley lab has been ongoing. We had supply chain issues, as everyone else did during this year, unfortunately, but it's finally coming to a close. We're getting to punch list status, which is good. There are staff bathrooms that are being upgraded at APT, Randall Carter, and Fallon. We have a temporary CO, I'm sorry, for the Valley lab, and again, I'm sorry, those bathrooms CO, I'm sorry, for the Valley Lab. And again, I'm sorry, those bathrooms will be a summer project. I have this much room to scribble my notes. I have to figure out a better system. The proposed rod grants, we're proceeding with those. There will be more to come. We have a new maintenance software system, which is already paying dividends for the department. We are purchasing laptop, well, what do we call those?
Tablets?
Tablets, those things. You could tell I'm really not on the Technology Committee. And those are going to be for our maintenance and grounds workers so that when they're out there in the field doing their work, they can easily punch in the work orders, what's been accomplished, what hasn't, and that goes straight to central office, as well as scanning QR codes for inventory that was used. It's a much better, highly automated system than what we've had in the past. So, again, a good thing. Let's see, da, 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 da. We went over some regulation updates, which will be on the next agenda, so more to come on that. But back to what's been going on in some of our buildings. Since we haven't met since November, one of the things happened in December was this water main break in front of JFK. Now, that's been a problem that's been ongoing. It's a county road, it's a county water main, but it's causing problems for us at JFK. And this last break caused a major problem to our driveway because all the water lifted up the asphalt, et cetera. But our top-notch facilities team managed to get that done overnight, and school reopened on time the next day. You couldn't even tell there was a hole in the road by the time they finished. Skyler, unfortunately, had a fire in the HVAC unit above the office. That caused only smoke damage, but that's enough damage. It's something that the staff members would have to continue to smell if we didn't address it. So, ServPro came in, did a full cleaning. Unfortunately, there was still an issue with the ductwork, and that's being addressed because the smell is coming from the ductwork. The other problem, huge water pipe broke in one of the classrooms and lifted up old asbestos tiles. So, that needs to be cleaned up and addressed. But thankfully, we have a place to relocate the students. They won't be subjected to any of the asbestos mediation. And that work should be completed by next week, and everyone will be back in the classrooms where they belong. And meanwhile, school is going on for them. One of the new initiatives from our facilities director, Mr. Romaine, to save on costs and to have our fields ready in the spring was, I believe this is the baseball field specifically, certainly not the football fields, was to cover them with blankets and seed them underneath the blankets so that when spring arrives, and he's been monitoring it to see if it's working, lift these blankets up. And we have beautiful grass ready to play on, which is a big change from what we've been dealing with in the past, where fields in the spring would be sopping wet, muddy, and not ready for play. So, you know, we're hoping that this trial pilot program is a success, and so far, it's on target to be. Because there's not a lot of groundwork to do, we've been fortunate that we haven't had a lot of snow removal and things like that to deal with. They've been diverting our groundskeepers to do other work, like preparing potholes and painting the floors in our boiler rooms and things that we don't always necessarily have time for during the school year. So, and they're also cleaning and waxing some other floors. So, we're making good use of our employees' free time. They're not sitting around. We discussed the referendum and the demographic study that is now available for our meeting, should we have one in the near future regarding the referendum, an update on that because we saw that the previous study wasn't exactly on target. We received more of an uptick in our student population than was forecasted. So, in order for us to do any requesting of money from the state, we have to have an accurate count, and we have to have an accurate forecast. Because the more accurate it is and the higher the number is, the more we get. So, that's crucial. Transportation, unfortunately, our director and one of our dispatchers are out for health reasons. Thankfully, we have extra dispatchers, and we have Sue Sikorsky on the job, and things are going smoothly despite the unfortunate health situation. We discussed the routes, the issues that we're having, the TSA bus drills, which went smoothly. As a matter of fact, we're considered a model district in that regard, and as you know, we have that CDL training program. We have four drivers working toward their final certification now, and we're going to be needing them. We will need a mechanic replacement. One is leaving, and we sometimes use the mechanics to drive buses when we're shorthanded, and that causes a backup in the repair work that needs to be done to keep those buses on the road. The other issue was the early childhood center and the number of students because it's such a successful program, and those students have to be picked up townwide. And we may have to outsource some of those routes because there's one or two kids on the bus. It's, you know, it's difficult to have that many buses out on the road for that low number of students per run. So, anyway, working hard over in facilities, and we'll be discussing the budget at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Just for clarification, for the record, Mr. Skabitski was absent from the meeting today.
Thank you. Mrs. Wendtik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, the Personnel Committee met at 5 o'clock. Ms. Paula Clark, Ms. Donna Reichman, Mr. Pavlik, and myself had attended. We discussed the elementary building coverage, where we want to make sure if principals are absent for any reason, that we have a group of staff that could fill in the position. We also discussed job descriptions update for the district, where we want to see consistency across all. And once we are done with the project, we hope that those job descriptions are all posted on our website. And last but not least, we've discussed leave requests from an employee that was reviewed by our committee today. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Move the agenda?
Sub moved, full agenda.
Mrs. Kazan?
Second.
All agenda?
Second.
Mr. Giordano, any comments on the agenda? Mrs. Kazan?
I'm going to start by reading letter F from the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends." There's an agenda item this evening, X1. "I want to be clear about my vote on this agenda item. It will be a hard no from me. In my nine years-plus on this board, I don't think I've seen a more frivolous or nuisance lawsuit. The fact that we are even considering this is abhorrent to me. I can honestly say, being president when this transpired, that everything that was done here was in the best interest of the children in the district. Unfortunately, we are sometimes under the gun, as it were, from the insurance company, who is more interested in settling cases rather than litigating, as it would be more profitable for them. We do not have full control. If we go against the insurance company, we will be forced to pay for the eventual outcome out of your pocket. I'm tired of being in this position. This case is particularly distasteful because I feel we have a very strong case, a slam dunk, if you will. Now, to make matters worse, we have five members of the board who are considered in conflict on this matter, thus triggering the doctrine of necessity, which you heard earlier. Now, invoking said doctrine does not force the conflicted member to vote yes. Quite the contrary, it merely gives the board a quorum to do this particular piece of business. An ethical person would ask themselves at this point if it violates the public trust to vote on this matter. To that, I would say you can abstain or vote no. You do have a choice to make. Now, I expect the response from some will be, I'm rolling the dice with taxpayer money. Well, I'm finally willing to do that. Sometimes you need to take a stand, and this is the time for me. Maybe it's time the residents see what these frivolous cases are costing. If we never take a stand, we will just continue to see more of these lawsuits, and they have been on the rise, trust me. We are coming across as an easy mark. Regardless of whether we settle or litigate, there is a cost to you. So, again, it's a hard no from me. Enough is enough. A strong message needs to be sent."
Anyone else? See no one else? Go call Mr. Boddle. Mrs. Kazan?
No on X1. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Rigoloso? Mrs. Wendtik?
Yes, on all.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes, on all.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Abstain on X1. Yes, everything else.
Mr. Pavlik? Yes. Motion's carried. This portion of the meeting is open to the public for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state their name, address, and subject matter. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano?
Second.
Mrs. Kazan? Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
Hi, doing? Nigel Goff. I have a daughter in the Valley School System. I just came up to address a couple of things that I've noticed. I was a student here as well, which many years ago, but one thing I want to bring up is attendance doesn't seem to be too much of an issue. My daughter, she has over 19 tardies, and she's never once had a detention. Does anybody know how many tardies you're allowed before detention is issued? The number? Neither does the attendance secretary at Wayne Valley. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we're trying to prepare these students for real life, show up to work late 19 times to see what happens, you know? So, I don't know about other students, but I know mine particularly, you know? It's not like really, really tardy, like hours, but, you know, I'm assuming when you went to school, you had the same problems. You're five minutes late to homeroom, which, that brings up another point. They don't have homeroom anymore, is that correct? They have block schooling. So, different teachers aren't seeing, they're seeing the students, you know? So, it's hard to, like, figure out what student's always tardy because the teachers, I guess they don't communicate, like, hey, this student was late yesterday in my class. So, you know, they show up to a different, like, room every day. So, I don't know if that's a problem. The other thing was, only seniors are allowed to go out to lunch, is that correct?
You'll be answered, the administration will answer to you.
Okay. So, only, when I went, you know, that's my only bit of association, is only seniors go out to lunch. Occasionally, underclassmen sneak out here and there, not a big deal. My daughter seems to do a lot more, and she's telling me she's seeing teachers at meals and Whole Foods. Again, no repercussions. And thirdly, was the, now we have On Course Connect, and this is how I'm keeping track of all this, obviously, which is great. She, I see her marking period grades throughout the entire marking period, and like, certain classes she has, like, she'll have an F or a D. And the notes will say, turn in assignments to be graded. And I don't know how much leniency there is about turning in late assignments, but she'll have an F up until, like, a day before the end of the marking period, and I guess she turns and everything last minute, and then all of a sudden, she's got a C or a B. Well, again, when I went to school, if your homework was late or something, you lose value to it. But it seems as though, under these circumstances, it's just as long as it's in by a certain date. And if that's how it's going, that's how it is. But, like I was saying, this is supposed to prepare, at least my child, I expect to be prepared for real life. This lack of discipline and punctuality is not going to help her once she gets into a real job. So, I was just asking that maybe those three things that I brought up could maybe, a little more attention be brought to them, and hopefully, it'll help the students out when they do reach, you know, the real world. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Salviando, 23 Rich Place. I just wanted to say, I want to follow up, really. Last meeting, Ms. Reichman asked, talked about treps and a project for recycling, and a Patterson Business was donating recycling to the school in particular. I was wondering if we could look into having our township more involved with the recycling center, maybe save the taxpayers some money in town for getting some recycling out of the recycling center, which we get paid, we pay by the tonnage to be shipped away. Just an idea. I'm just going to backtrack a little bit, too. I've been coming to meetings for a long time. I sent an email a while ago to our new Director of Athletics, Mr. Dražak, and Ryan Bailey regarding upgrades to Hills facilities, in particular, near the athletic fields, which everyone uses band in all the sports programs, to have real bathrooms. It's been decades now where there's been a snack stand in porta potties, and it's really getting to be a safety hazard. I'm really, I don't know who else to talk to about this. I know we have engineering people. I wish there was a study done and get the ball rolling on that and make safety a priority and not have people for all different sports programs at night go into these porta potties in the pitch black and not know what's in there or how you're coming out or stepping. So, I really wish that would be looked into and make it a priority. I heard a referendum update from Mrs. Kazan, which is great. I really would like to see that public panel be created quickly if we want to get moving on the referendum. As far as another follow-up, I know I'm all over the place. I apologize. I was late to the meeting. WEF camp, I asked a while ago, Dr. Tobek, about something that'd be looked into, about the WEF camp being moved out of Wayne Hills High School. It's there every year. I think in order for us to do proper maintenance during the summer months, outside and inside, in our facilities at Hills, I think they should be addressed at that time. With a camp there, it makes it extremely difficult for proper maintenance and everything else to go on during that time. It makes it even harder to do the maintenance when you have a camp going on for a number of weeks there. Next, it would be something I'm not happy about talking about, which is transparency and politics bleeding into the board. I know we have new board members, and I see what it was like for our board members last year, being kept at arm's length. I wish you all the best of luck navigating through this. And I hope that this board is more accepting of you than the previous board that took over last January. With that, good luck, the both of you, and Mr. Giordano. Transparency, again, as far as spending goes, I hear a lot about what's going on in council, but I don't hear what's going on here. I know there is dollar amounts that you don't have to report, but I'm just giving you a few examples that bother me that I think we could have used our student body with, which is our athletics websites. They were updated, and we paid a consulting firm to do it. I really think that's something we could have included, as well as the ticketing launch for hometown ticketing, where we could have really made it a point to show what talents we have in town with our student body, to develop a website themselves, one that works. I'm sure it could have been done. PCTI is doing it. We could do it, too. We gave contracts out. I don't know what they cost. I have no idea. I don't want to know. I really just think it's troubling. Even more troubling is, on the athletics tab, we now have whoever is in charge of it going and looking for sponsorships to sponsor the website. Furthermore, you're handpicking people in town that booster clubs rely on to support their programs while the year is going on. So, we're losing out on potential sponsors for our sports programs to support the website that we created that we knew nothing about. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bielma. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. Mayor Gurkha of 24 PK Drive. I want to thank the board members and recognize them, the new ones especially, for your service and Board Member Recognition Month. So, thank you again. I've stood before this board before, and I come with the exact same agenda as I had the previous times, is to talk about the ongoing mental health crisis in this country specifically, in this state and in this town, and amongst the 7,600 students of- specifically, in this state and in this town, and in amongst the 7,600 students of Wayne Public Schools. It's not my data, it's data that has been collected over decades, and the, the rates of hopelessness and sadness and depression and suicide ideation amongst teenagers has skyrocketed in the last 10 years specifically, with thanks to TikTok, Instagram, and Snapchat. They don't really help the situation, and I have come, I've spoken, as members of the board have given me advice, go and speak to the principals. I've had meetings with both high school principals, as well as the superintendent, about this topic. And as I've mentioned to them, I have no skin in this game. I, my children go to private school, I'm a religious Jew. I've never gone to Wayne Public School, even though I've lived here for over 30 years. So I'm doing this completely altruistically. I have no, nothing to gain from this, except to help the students of this town. And I promote again my concept, which is free, takes 60 seconds, and literally involves no investment other than those 60 seconds, which is a moment of silence, that we should promote in schools, that children, specifically teenagers, are worth more than just their academics, more than just their sports. I deal with teens on a constant basis. We have a teen group in our synagogue, and they all go to public school here in Wayne. I know what they do, I know their schedules. I was at a Wayne hockey match two weeks ago. They lost, obviously, but I can get into that. But one of our members, children were playing, I went to go see the game. I know what the kids do, I know how their schedules are. I've asked the parents, how do you take your kids to all of these sports matches? And they do homework, and they have to go to, I don't, I don't understand the schedule that these children have. I didn't have that schedule when I was in school. There is a mental health crisis, there is pressure, there is extreme feelings of hopelessness and meaninglessness amongst children, amongst teens. And to give them a moment to realize their worth, their value as being a human being, about the person standing next to them or sitting next to them in the classroom, and that will cause hopefully a slight change in their attitude in the future to be upstanding citizens, not just educated citizens, but upstanding and respectful citizens. So again, I push my cause. Yes, you can read the statute literally, which allows, in the state of New Jersey, for principals and teachers to allow a moment of silence in public schools. You can read that literally, but I, I don't know all the ins and outs of the school board, but I think the board sets the policy, not the principals. And although the principals can allow it, that's a strange reading of the statute, because principals don't set the policies of their agendas in schools, from what I understand. So I put that again, a moment of silence. I'll do all the work, I'm here. I'm offering myself for it. It doesn't cost the school district a penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Speak on any item.
Thank you for your indulgence. John Ferris Meredith, you know me from Tap into Wayne, but I'm here in my capacity as a board member of the Passaic County 200 Club. And thank you to our trustees, Eevee Wentick and Harry Prusakos, President Don Pavlek, and Ryan Battershill for becoming members of the 200 Club. I'd like to invite the rest of the trustees to join us as well, and the administration, too. The 200 Club, all we do is if any Passaic County first responder dies in the line of duty, within 48 hours, we come with a $10,000 check for their widowed spouse, and we help set up college scholarships for their children as well. Recently, there was a fire in Pompton Lakes, and five firefighters were inside a building when it exploded. They lived. The injuries weren't bad, thank goodness, they're okay. But if those five members had died, we would have been there with $50,000. Now, the Passaic County 200 Club membership, last year, COVID crushed this organization, and we're really starting to build up. We had 55 members come September. At this point here, with renewals, we have 110, and we're looking to do more. So we'd like to invite the entire community to come help support our first responders. And on this Wednesday, you're, you're signing up right now, aren't you, Barbara?
Yeah, I'm signing right now.
I love it, I love it. On Wednesday, at 6 o'clock, at the Botagra Restaurant in Hawthorne, we're holding a little cocktail party, it's a membership drive. We'd like to invite everybody to come. And basically, to become a member, it's just $250. That's a donation into a pool, and from that pool is where all those death benefits get paid out. So thank you for your support and your continued support, and we hope we'll see you there. Thank you. Say your last name, so everybody knows how to pronounce it, Barbara.
Rigaloso.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Do I have a motion to close? Mr. Batterfield?
Second.
Mr. Giordano? Do we have a couple retirements tonight? Mrs. Wentick?
Retirement for Patricia DeVitrio. Patricia DeVitrio will be retiring from the Transportation Department on March 1st, 2023. Patty D. had begun her, began her career with the Transportation Department in September 1997 as a bus driver. During her 25-plus years of service, she has served the department in many roles. Patty started as a 54-passenger bus driver, driving our students to school for regular school runs. For a short time, she was an athletic spare driver, doing athletics as well as filling in for drivers that were out sick. Finally, toward the end of her career, she became a van driver, serving the needs of the special needs students, as well as our small preschoolers and our community-based instructional students. Patty has truly been an asset to the Transportation Department and a respected senior driver of the staff. Over the course of her years of service to Wayne Township Public Schools, she has been dedicated to her work responsibility of transporting all the students to their respectful schools, programs, and athletics. As she enters her retirement phase of her life, she will be moving west to Arizona to enjoy drier, warmer weather. Patty will be missed, but never forgotten. From all of your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a happy, long, and healthy retirement. Thank you.
Mr. Prusakos?
This came in from George Washington Middle School for Maria Genart. Here's with mixed emotions that I write to celebrate Mrs. Maria Genart, a science teacher at the George Washington Middle School and a friend to us all. While it is truly exciting that she is preparing to embark on her retirement, it is sad that our days working with her are coming to an end. In the classroom, Mrs. Genart has and continues to demonstrate her love for science and the magic of learning, all while demonstrating the doors of possibility and education can open for her students. Throughout her years in education, Mrs. Genart has witnessed and gone through countless changes in education, new programs, and adjusted to new mandates. However, through all the changes in the world around her, the one constant has been her presence and commitment to our school and its students. She has proven that one consistent predictor of success in the classroom is a caring and dedicated teacher. During her time at George Washington, Mrs. Genart has developed countless relationships and made the difference for so many students that have walked through her door. This difference may not always have been in science, sometimes the impact was much greater than that. While it is to go on about what Mrs. Genart has meant to her students in the Science Department, I would be remiss to not mention the impact she has had on our school community. Mrs. Genart was a large supporter for our ESL program and the students in it. Whether it was academically or providing materials, she was always there. The same support was shown to providing assistance to those in need in the Wayne community. Whenever a program was running and collections were made, there was always one person I knew could be counted on to make the event successful. These continued efforts demonstrate caring and compassion Mrs. Genart has, and this was not just for the students and the community. She cares equally for all the staff as well, and when in need, it is without a doubt she will be there for you. When you hear about a person who cares so much and is as committed as Mrs. Genart, it is hard to admit they will not be finishing the year with us. But at the same time, she is split between her two families, the one at GW and her beautiful family at home that continually grows. While selfishly, we would love for her to stay, it is time to put all of her energy into her other family, the Genarts, Urbanskis, and the Morrisons, and provide them with the love and caring she has shown all of us. We thank Mrs. Genart for all that she has done for our school, and we will miss her.
Thank you, and to our retirees, we wish you all the best. Any old business? Mrs. Wentick?
Yes, I would like a motion to move three of the public work session meetings to the respective middle schools, as noted by the administration at the last agenda. Thursday, April 13th, 2023, Anthony Wayne Middle School Media Center. Thursday, June 1st, 2023, George Washington Middle School Media Center. And Thursday, September 7th, 2023, Schuyler Colfax Middle School Media Center.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Mrs. Rigaloso? Any discussion? Mrs. Kazan?
The board discussed this at a recent work session. We asked for more information, which we have yet to receive, and it was taken off the agenda to discuss at a future work session, which will be our next one. To bring this up publicly when board members are absent and unable to discuss it fully with a full board is out of line and unacceptable behavior from a colleague. We decided as a full board what to do, and we should continue down that path.
Any other comments? Volco?
Mrs. Rigaloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Wentick?
Yes.
Mr. Battershill?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
No.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
I'll abstain.
It's five, and affirmative motion carries.
Any other old business? New business? Dr. Tobek, would you like to address?
I can't even respond to some of the questions. So for the first parent who spoke from Valley. So basically, I'm not sure about all the details. Obviously, it's hard to tell the specifics of your situation, nor would it be appropriate for me to talk or have a discussion in public about your child. But what I can tell you is that basically for a student who is late for 12 minutes, that, that's counted as an absence from class, regardless of if you arrive there or not. You know, 12 minutes, 15 minutes, you're absent from class that day. Once you hit 18 absences, you lose credit for the year. So there's certainly a steep consequence for students who are absent, and I'm assuming this is a first-period class situation, but that's the general, that's the, that's the school rules. If there is a debate about that or a concern that you have, it really is more appropriate to talk to the teacher of that class, or it's appropriate to talk to the principal. As far as lunch goes, there's, there's, there's an open lunch. And so there was an open lunch that was extended to juniors, and that was done during the pandemic. And that was done because ultimately we had a unit lunch, and we wanted students, we didn't want to have as many students housed in the cafeteria at the same time. So we tried to spread that out a little bit, so we opened up the lunch to the juniors. Okay, so that's why that is. But everyone is out at lunch at the same time, all the students, staff members, everybody has lunch, that's the purpose of the unit lunch. So everyone has lunch at the same time. And likewise, for any student, if you are tardy to class, which means you're late, but you're not at 12 minutes, that is supposed to lead to detention. So, but again, these are things to talk to either with the teachers where you're concerned about, or it's appropriate to talk to the principal for like more, more detailed information. Okay? Mr. Biando, you, you had, you had quite a few questions, quite a few comments, and so I think probably what makes the most sense is to discuss some of the stuff if you want to stop by, I could talk to you about those items. But I will say this, as far as your concerns about the facilities, the district has spent quite a bit in terms of upgrading facilities at Wayne Hills. And so obviously, the new turf field is a, is quite an upgrade. The press box, we made upgrades to the press box at the beginning of the season. Obviously, the baseball facilities have been upgraded, so there's been, there's been quite an investment in facility upgrades, and we do what we can within the budget that we have. But as far as the Board of Education is concerned, so there is the possibility of a referendum moving forward, there is the possibility within those plans to include things like permanent bathrooms, right, not porta-potties, running water out to the athletic facilities so that that's available, having locker rooms. There's a, there's a variety of things that are possible, and certainly, we would be happy if the board agrees to move ahead, or if members of the booster club or any members of the athletic community would like to be involved. Certainly, the board will be having some meetings in the coming months to talk about a referendum and the different projects that might be a part of that referendum. Okay, so that's, that's an important thing. So then, I guess that's, that's basically, I know that we had our third, our third speaker tonight who restated his position, that really is a determination for the board to make if you'd like to move ahead. I mean, I know that he, we did speak, I know he spoke to the principals, but at this point, it's really probably best for the board to take up that discussion.
Thank you. Board member comments? Mrs. Kazan?
Well, I guess as an example this evening of this new unity that we're going to have on the board going forward, it was brought up at the last meeting, and I already said I think that this motion is the exact opposite of that. Just to give you a few examples about what training is given to new board members with regard to public meetings. Board meetings are meetings of the board in public, not meetings with the public. You can create multiple opportunities to encourage input on district concerns and challenges and setting that support dialogue rather than diatribe. In that regard, there can be community forums. Those aren't run by the board, those are run by the administration. Again, board meetings are for board business. We don't run the school district. There can be coffees with the superintendent, there are curriculum parent groups that can be put together. Moving our work session, again, was under discussion. It was agreed by the board at the last meeting that we would wait to make an informed decision on what moving those meetings meant for our board work. So, welcome to the new board, folks, pay attention.
I would like to just, you know, we have a great start of, in 2023. I have been lucky to follow the Wayne Valley cheer team, and I want to tell you, there are many amazing athletes on that team, actually, the whole team. So far from four competitions that they had, they won every single one, so kudos to them. I know we don't talk about cheer a lot, but I get the privilege of going and taking pictures as my daughter is on it, so I'm really excited about their season. It just started, so next couple of weeks, we will see some more. You know, I follow a variety of sports, actually, tonight there is a hockey game that many of our students are there, so good luck, hopefully it's a positive one. And that's all I have for today, just kudos to cheer and all the athletes out there today. Thank you.
I just wanted to give kudos to the Wayne Public Schools for the day of service for the United Way on Martin Luther King Junior Day, for everyone that participated and everyone that donated this past Monday. I also want to give kudos to the student reps. I love listening to the scholars, the scholar musicians, and the scholar athletes and what they're up to at the high schools. Good luck to Wayne Hockey tonight versus PCTI. I also, you know, if we don't have any further discussion, I do want to encourage teachers to do take those 60 seconds out, as Rabbi Gurkha had mentioned. So hopefully, we can continue this discussion with the board and possibly put it on the agenda in the future. I also wanted to explain why I was comfortable in voting yes on the previous motion Mrs. Wentick made. We're thinking about doing a referendum, and we will have to do a roadshow. So to me, this is an opportunity to get out there and, you know, have public work sessions in different venues, possibly have additional members of the public attend, maybe it's closer to their house. And it's my understanding, it's been a minimal cost, where we've had other venues, held meetings at other venues or forums at other venues. So, you know, if there's a minimal cost for additional transparency and flexibility, I'm all for it. And next week is And next week is Chinese New Year, so to all our Asian neighbors and friends, Happy Year of the Rabbit. Next year is my year. I'm a dragon, so thank you.
Mrs. Rigoloso?
First and foremost, I'd like to thank Mrs. Putup for her service to the Wayne community. I also would like to give a special bravo to Catherine and Ramsey. I love hearing all the updates on the Wayne Valley students. And Rabbi, you're right, our students do do it all, academics, sports, arts. They really, really are exceeding in all those beautiful things that they do. Special congrats to Joe Light, 600 basketball games, 600 wins, I'm sorry, and Coach Kathleen Sinaram, Wayne Valley Basketball, 300 wins. Thank you to all our parents that came out tonight showing your concerns. We promise to be transparent, and we promise that we hear you, and we'll do our best to get your concerns taken care of. I will be signing up for the 200 Club, and we encourage all parents to come to our meeting. But since we don't have that big of a turnout, we're coming to your house. So that's why I voted yes, because it'll give us a better understanding of what's going on in the schools, I feel, my opinion. And I feel that it's something new, and why not? And Happy New Year.
Mr. Giordano?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say congratulations and good luck to Sue. She's been a good friend and an excellent board member. You did a top-notch job. I'm sorry I bumped you off on this one, but come back next year. We'd love to see you up here again. Your expertise would really be useful here. As an educator myself, I wanted to comment to the rabbi, the moment of silence is an excellent idea. However, you're going to be opening up a can of worms if you try to impose. Every morning, I battle with my classes. Everybody rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I get out of the 15 or 20 seniors, who by the way, do come in late, and I got to fight with them also every morning in my district. But I ask them to stand up and salute the flag, and I'll get three. And I've been told over many years, you can't comment about it. You can't say anything. You're not allowed to do this. And a lot of organizations will go out there and say, if you, the word is compel. If you compel, you're opening up a can of worms, and you're going to be opening up lawsuits for it. I'm not against it. I think it's great. I think it's a great idea. But if the word compel comes into it, I can predict just upon 30 years of classroom experience, it's going to come down to the board, and we're going to have to, there'll be a big discussion from people who are in law saying, no, you can't compel to do that. Great idea. Not against it. I think it's a wonderful thing. It's the simple little steps are a way we get through our days here. But you'll have enough people say, you don't have the right to tell my child to do that. And that's a big thing, just to warn on it. Is it a hill I'll plant my flag on? Yeah, sure, I'll do that. I'll plant a flag on that. It's for the mental health of my students. But understand, it's not going to be something, you're going to walk and everything, it's the most wonderful idea in the world, and you can do it. There will be resistance to it, just from me as an educator seeing it on the front lines every single morning at 7:35 in the morning. The 200 Club, thank you for reminding me of that one. I said we'd go to that one. I'll be talking to you soon about how to sign up for that one, because I do want to get into it. But it was Christmas, okay? I had to make sure everybody took care of their stuff, so. Thank you all very much for attending, for all, everybody out there, stay warm and stay dry. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Giordano, Mr. Batterfield. Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.